This is hot on the press. I hope I have a pen.
We will have to share a mic, too. Okay.
You guys good? All right, it's six oh two P M. I'd like to call this public hearing of the Winchester School Committee to order. The purpose of tonight's hearing is for the district to share progress on the budget with the community and to give the community the opportunity to hear and respond to budget-related questions from the community. The school committee may ask clarifying questions of Dr. Hackett but will not be deliberating on the twenty-five budget during the hearing. We'll be deliberating in our regular meeting later this evening. And the committee is scheduled to vote on the recommended FY twenty-five budget that we'll be submitting to the town. We'll be voting on that on Tuesday, January thirtieth, twenty twenty-four at a special hearing. The process for tonight's public hearing is as follows. We will hear a presentation of the preliminary budget from Dr. Hackett. The school committee members will have an opportunity to ask clarifying questions of Dr. Hackett. For this, per our past practice, we'll go around the table and each member will have an opportunity to ask one question. This will enable all committee members to participate more fully and we'll come back around if there are subsequent questions. So we just want to, you know, let each member ask a question and then go back if we need to. We'll then invite clarifying questions regarding the FY twenty-five budget from the community. Those interested in speaking shall form lines at the two microphones in the aisles. All questions will be addressed through the chair. Community members will identify themselves by their name and street of residence. Each speaker will have up to three minutes. And Ms. Bergstrom, are you able to keep time on that for us?
Sure, I can do that.
Great. Ms. Bergstrom will keep time on that. Community members may be recognized for a second opportunity to speak, time permitting, only after we've heard from everyone. So we'd just like to go through the line if, so everyone can be heard. I'll then invite another round of clarifying questions from the committee before we adjourn in case any issues have come up during the presentation. And adjournment is scheduled for around seven o'clock. So with that, Dr. Hackett, I will hand the microphone over to you.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you. Good to see you all. It's nice to have a crowd at a public hearing for a change, so it's been something we've experienced for a while. I just wanted to start by just kind of saying what I'm going to show tonight is a still, we still consider it to be a draft budget. As Mr. Hopcroft talked through the process, the point of tonight is to show you where we are, answer, try to answer all the questions that you have, and then for the committee to deliberate at their next meeting, which is immediately following this with a fifteen-minute break. And then for, we will do additional work on the budget between now and next Tuesday, which is when they vote. But also the finance subcommittee of this committee is meeting on Thursday. So the feedback that happens here will be discussed whatever level at the next meeting tonight. And then the finance subcommittee will discuss it and recommend adjustments on Thursday. And then that budget will eventually turn into what is my recommended budget to the school committee for their consideration on Tuesday night, which they can do whatever they want to do with it in terms of increase, decrease, however they want to look at it. And then we turn that budget over to the town manager. It then goes through a fairly lengthy process with the finance FinCom, which is the Town's Finance Committee, the Select Board, and other groups that will be asking questions, inviting us in to explain. And that process then culminates into the town meeting where we, the town meeting actually votes our bottom line. So I thought it would be best to start with the end in mind and take away any suspense or mystery in terms of what this budget is and what it isn't. So with the first slide, this is, I would describe it as a straight level services budget. There are no new positions in this budget currently, and there are no new programs included in this budget. And one of the reasons why that is true is, as you will see as we move on here, the committee made a significant investment in our staff, which we believe is important. We were experiencing some turnover over the last couple of years. The anecdotal reporting was people were being able to go to other places and make more money than they were making with us. We were not as competitive in the market as we felt we needed to be, and we negotiated a contract with the teachers and all other units that next year is the last year of that contract. This coming year in FY twenty-five, this last year actually is a three, a four percent increase for teachers. Other units such as the par professionals, ESPs, and admin assistants are different levels of increases. Obviously, the bulk of our staff is in Unit A, which is the teachers' unit. So that four percent increase has, is really the investment for next year, and it resets our contract. We are much more competitive in comparison to other towns and school systems that we have historically not been as competitive with as we want to be. It's important because we spend a lot of time and energy with our staff, we bring them on board, we do a lot of professional development. If people want to go to further their career somewhere else or to take a vertical step or what, that's one thing. But for people to be able to just go a few miles away from us and make an additional ten or twelve thousand dollars, that is not where we want to be, because then we're starting all over again with a brand-new staff member and trying to onboard and work them into the system. So that really is the biggest piece of this budget. We have a, also we have a new general education transportation contract, which we'll talk a little bit about later, but we just concluded, we concluded a third year contract, a third year of a contract this year. Next year, we re-up into a new contract with our, with our same provider, actually. We did, we go through a bid process. Miss Baldassai and Andrew Maron, Director of Finance and Operations, were involved in that, and we had one bidder, which is not surprising, given the size of our transportation system, as well as that, you know, it's, it's not, we're not attractive for transportation for a lot of contractors, because there's such an overhead ramp up to be able to come in and make a bid. So that is, that is factored into this budget. So no new positions or programs, third year of contract, we've factored in the general education transportation, the new contract. On the next slide, the current budget that we're in, we were, the Select Board voted to approve two hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars in ARPA funding in order for us to provide free transportation to our Lynch students who are attending Parkers. That involved putting a significant number of buses on the road. We had to, we had to add another tier. Some of you may be Lynch parents who know that. It didn't go as swimmingly as we hoped it would in the beginning, but I think we're in a good place now, especially with the construction projects that had ended. But we are running anywhere from ten to eleven buses on our tiers. Well, we have three tiers now. So we generally have elementary tier and a high, a middle school, high school tier. This year, we're running a early tier for Lynch. It's a straight run. Buses come, they pick up students in the Lynch neighborhoods, they bring them to Parkers, and then they go to the elementary schools. Then they go, after that run, they go to the high schools. So current year, the Select Board approved that two hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars. That is not, there is no funding, we are, we have no, we do not have that funding again next year, going into next year at this point. So the current FY twenty-five contract cost is part of that renegotiated contract. The, the cost for that Lynch tier is three hundred and twenty-one thousand, one hundred and twenty dollars. Additionally, we're not charging fees for Lynch families for this year and next year, which is about a fifty thousand dollar loss in revenue in our fees. So all in, it's about a three hundred and seventy-five thousand, seventy thousand dollar swing. The, that amount of money, that three twenty-one, one twenty, is, is not included in the budget that I'm presenting to the committee tonight. We are hopeful that there may be an outside or an additional funding source that we can rely on. If that is not the case, then we will need to regroup and figure out how to cover that cost, but that, those services will be provided. The out-of-district tuition costs, year over year, has been, you know, a driver for us, as it is in any, any school system. You know, the, we have had a structural gap for the last several years now, and I'll share with you where we are with that. But just to point out that as we go into FY twenty-five, we are expending two sources of one-time funding. One of those sources is the remaining ESAR funding of three hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars. And then we have a one-time allocation called IDEA. It's from the federal government of two hundred and thirty-six thousand, oh seven-two. So those two-dollar figures going into next fiscal year, the FY twenty-five budget that we're presenting tonight, those revenue sources are not available to us. And of course, as you might imagine, our out-of-district costs, like all of our other costs, haven't gone down. So, but there's a little bit of good news on, on that front. But regardless, we need to recover and make up for those, those two funding sources for FY twenty-five. We have built in an increase in our out-of-district tuition costs in the operating budget, so that is funded as we sit here at this budget that we have in front of you right now. We have had, in FY twenty-four, we came into this fiscal year, this school year, we had a fairly significant number of retirements. That was partially driven by a retirement incentive that we had negotiated with the teachers' union going into this year. That helped us tremendously, several hundred thousand dollars differential between our ability to, one, we reduced several sections at the elementary level because of the enrollment decreases or declines or flattening that we've been seeing and had experience. And in cases where it was someone who was retiring or a positionality at the elementary section that was also retiring, that was really a full, a full savings for us of that person's entire salary. So we benefited from that coming into this fiscal year. That is not the same situation as we did have, which is also good news, because turnover is difficult going into FY twenty-five. So we're not realizing any savings, really, any substantial savings from any retirements. We're also not really realizing at this point, and we're still working on this, but we have been able to, over the last couple of years, we've been able to make some adjustments in our elementary sections, the number of sections that we have at each school. We are challenged by, our neighborhood schools are fantastic, and we support them, and the district has made, and the town has made a commitment to that. There is a bit of a premium cost in that commitment, and, because what happens is that, of course, we get to the point where we have maybe four sections that we can reduce to three in a school, if there's a reduction in that grade level in that neighborhood school. But then when you start going below three, the numbers start to really get a little wonky. So we have now experienced, and we're going to experience it some next year, we've had some, some sections in some schools that are fairly, are fairly significantly low, which is not a bad thing, but it does create an equity issue, because we are mindful of really looking at all of our elementary schools and making sure that, to the best that we can, we try to balance our class sizes. But we just have some schools that are just, happen to have a larger student enrollment than others, and when students move in, they don't equally distribute, they, they go where the, the properties are, and we, we put them in the school that, in which their neighborhood is. So we are not really benefiting, other than the one section we've taken right now, and I say benefiting from the standpoint of, of a cost offset, that we could then look at the, the funds that we're using for elementary sections, which we have done the last couple of years, and invest them into other programs or resources to support students. So this is just a, a quick kind of look at where we are. The FY twenty-four town meeting-approved budget, which is the budget that we are in right now, is sixty-three million, almost sixty-three million, two hundred thousand or so. That represented a three-point-seven percent, seven-six percent increase over the FY twenty-three budget. That budget went through the same process we're going through with this budget, and it eventually was brought to a three-point-seven-six percent increase. And again, with, there's a lot of reasons for that, which I just explained, from retirements to other cost breaks that we were experiencing, and also some additional kind of one-time revenue sources. The first budget that, that we brought to the committee was what we called the needs-based rollover budget, which is simply us taking every position that we have now, everything that we're doing now, and just bringing it all forward into next year. So we adjust for the contracts, for employment contracts, we adjusted for the general transportation contract, but at that point, we had not adjusted for any special ed out-of-district placements. We had not made any, any, any adjustments for, for enrollment-based adjustments. It's simply our first effort, our first attempt. It's not, it's a real budget, but it's not, but it's, it's the first look at what does it cost us if we're going to do the same thing next year as we're doing this year, what would it cost us next year? So that budget came in at about four-point-nine-three percent. From that point, the finance subcommittee actually was working prior to these dates that you see here. They started in actually in November, early December. From that point, on January sixteenth, we brought to the committee for discussion a budget that was a four-point-eight-seven percent budget, or sixty-six million, two-hundred-and-seventy-one thousand. And then tonight, from that four-point-eight-seven, we've been able to get, get a little bit closer and hone in a little bit and just get a, a little bit more efficient with, with some of the things that we looked at and how we could really predict and try to project costs like out of district. It's a difficult time to put a budget together and to have it done in the end of January for a budget that doesn't start until September, because as you can imagine, a lot of things change between now and, and September one. We have students move in, we have students who, who have, who have emerging needs, who need additional support or resources. So it is, it is a difficult task to bring a budget at, in, in the end of January that is, we, we do the best we can, understanding that we will be probably experiencing some fluctuations, fluctuations up and down, but we are comfortable with this budget number. We believe that regardless of what happens, that we, this puts us in a position where we can run our programs well next year. But again, just so everyone understands, we do not have any new positions or programming in this budget, and we're at that four-point-seven-four percent number. This is just kind of a, a line roll-up look at what, what are the biggest hitters or impacts for us in putting the budget together. You can see the current budget we're in again, the sixty-three million. Our contractual obligations are increasing at two-point-five-six-two. Our out-of-district tuition costs, we are carrying an additional three hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars in the operating budget. There are several sources of funding for out of district, which I'll explain on the next slide. And then we have, we have built in the general education transportation increase of fifty-seven thousand, seven eighty. Again, that number does not include transportation for Lynch students to Parkers totaling in the sixty-six point-two million or the four-point-seven-four percent. So there's, there is some, I think, good news here on, on, on the horizon for us. When I first got here three years ago, we were experiencing a fairly high increases in our special education tuition, tuition costs that were driven somewhat by, by increases in students, but also increases in costs. We get tagged hard this year in the fiscal year that we're in. The, there's a state agency that determines how much out-of-district placement schools can increase their tuition costs. And we went from FY twenty-three into FY twenty-four, the state allowed for a fourteen percent increase in those costs. So the numbers that you see here really do reflect that fourteen percent increase, because as you can see, we went from sixty-seven students to sixty-three students, yet our costs went from five-point-one million to six-point-one million. And I just made a note down below, the fourteen percent increase on the five-point-one million in the current year that we're in is five-point-eight million worth of the six-point-one million. So just that inflationary increase adjustment that was made, which we had no control over, was the majority of that increase for out-of-district tuition costs from fiscal year twenty-three to, to the current year FY twenty-four. Projected moving forward, this is a good example, again, of, these, these are, these are hard to really project, but we, we have much better data, we, and we're seeing some stabilization in this, which is the good news. We were looking at structural deficits and gaps when we first got here, five, four, five-hundred thousand dollar year over year, and we were really trying to figure out how to close that gap. I think we've, we have been successful for a variety of reasons as we look at FY twenty-five, but also understanding that we have increased the general fund appropriation for out-of-district tuition placements. But as you can see, where we are projecting, we're to go from sixty-three to sixty-one students for next year, we are projecting a total expense of six million, one sixty-one, four thirty-five, which, as you can see, compared to the current year, is really just a very slight increase year over year. So that is good news, very good news, because as, as you might imagine, we, those tuition payments, we obviously support our students who are a district. We make those payments, there's really no, as with the fourteen percent increase, we don't, you know, we don't really have the ability to, to really have a lot of influence over that in terms of the students that we have placed. So we feel, we, I feel good about that. I did want to note, though, and I put this in the first couple of slides, we have two funding sources that we're using right now this fiscal year to, to cover our out-of-district tuition costs, which I mentioned earlier, is the ESAR funding, the three hundred and thirty-two thousand, and the IDEA, the two hundred and thirty-six thousand. The IDEA is, is rollover money, that's, those were one-time funds that we had to expend. ESAR funding, that is the, the end of our ESAR funding, and that has to be spent by the end of September of twenty-four. So we cannot use those funds to pay for next year tuition costs. So those two revenue sources are gone, which is reflective of the fact that we had to increase our general fund appropriation from twenty-four to twenty-five, but also would point out that we don't know on IDEA two forty, that line, you can see the current year appropriation is about eighty, eighty-eight thousand, we're just, I'm eight-hundred and fifty thousand, sorry. We're carrying the same number for next year. We anticipate that will go up, but it, we're likely twenty or thirty thousand dollars. There's no reason to expect it would go up much more than that. The good news for us with this, for going into FY twenty-five, is that we, we have received for next year, a little over two million dollars in circuit breaker funds. Those are, those funds are from the state. They are for extraordinary costs that go above a certain amount of money. It's quite like a circuit breaker. Once we, once we hit the circuit breaker, it throws the switch and we receive some additional funding for our extraordinary costs with, related to out-of-district tuition and actually also for other services. So that has helped, that helps cover some of that gap for the next two funding sources. So we have our total budgeted allocation for next year, and the current draft budget that's being presented tonight is six million, one fifty-one, nine thirty-six, with a total expense projection of six million, one sixty-one, four thirty-five, with, which shows a differential right now of about ten thousand dollars. And if you just kind of follow twenty-three, twenty-four into twenty-five, we, we have made significant reductions in the gap that we're experiencing. in the gap that we're experiencing. So that is good news for us, and we'll continue to track that, and that will adjust certainly between now and September. So finally, this is what we call our rollover roll-up budget. These are the major expense lines. These lines are what we report to the state at the end of year report. You can see from central office to high school, so the schools are listed. Additionally, we have a line for special education, that is preschool through grade 12, and actually transition as well. Athletics, technology, and pupil services, which includes nursing services and other services for students that are not necessarily related to special education. So when you just kind of go from left to right, you can see FY24 budgeted personnel, you can see the cost for each one of those cost centers, you can see FY24 budgeted expenses, and then you can see the FY24 approved budget total. The budgeted expenses are everything that's non-personnel. Then '25, you can see our proposed personnel services, so those are salaries, contractual salaries with all units and all employees. You can see the next line over is our proposed expenses, and then our proposed total spending, which is this budget that you have in front of you this evening, which represents about a $3 million or $2.97 million increase over FY24, the current budget year. And then you can see that total percent increase represents, I'm sorry, the actual increase for, yeah, that's right, is 4.74%, as I mentioned earlier. Just to note a few things here on this rollover roll-up budget. The district has been reporting central office cost and personnel. At the end of the, every fiscal year, we have to provide a report to the state. When we provide that report, there are categories that we have to report in. The central office category only includes, in terms of what the state wants us to report to them, is everything that you would think would just be central office. So superintendent, assistant superintendent, personnel services, administrative support, the business office, those are true central office costs. What the district has done in prior years is that we had, the district has carried in central office content directors and other positions that are instructional curriculum-related, and they call it instructional support positions, and that's how they get reported to the state. In conversation with our finance subcommittee and conversations with the school committee, we think this is appropriate and more reflective and transparent of what we do and where we spend our funds to make this adjustment going into next year. So if you look at the second, if you look at the column to the far right, and just starting with FY24 budgeted staff, so the result of that is current budget year in central office, we are budgeting 23.1 staff members. Proposed for next year, we're budgeting 12. That is a reallocation of those positions. Those are not reductions. Those, again, are content coordinators, they are directors, and other instructional support positions. Director of nursing, for example, moved into, we've moved that position to pupil services. So the distribution of those positions has an impact on all the school lines as a ratio of how much support those specific positions provide to those schools. So for example, our directors are almost exclusively grades six through 12, and they teach at the high school for the most part, a portion of their day is teaching at the high school. So we charge the high school for their teaching portion of the day, and then we distribute their director's position responsibilities and costs between the high school and McCall. And then you can see some of the impacts on the other schools as we moved instructional support positions to the schools that support the elementary level. So again, you can kind of see the increases. This is a one-time reset and allows us to have a good history moving forward year over year. So that is the 4.74% budget. Taking a look at enrollment, is we know, we have seen like every other school system, or in the majority, and I can't think of any that haven't experienced a decline in enrollment. There's been, the decline in enrollment statewide has happened since the pandemic, and it's very clear when they happen. You can see in 2020, that was the year the pandemic hit, that was the year we shut down in March, and then the following year went into a hybrid remote learning modes. Winchester did that, just like every other school system, and that had an impact on our enrollment. And then you can see when we came back in '21 in Massachusetts, less so for us, interestingly. But when we came back to full in person in that year, and that was the year, if you remember, that we were still masking to start the year, we were still having 10 days of quarantine if anybody was, and we were testing nonstop, you were testing nonstop. We had staff who were out for 10 days, and then it changed to five eventually. That was that year, that was my first year. We actually, we increased a little bit, as a state number, the change in Massachusetts enrollment jumped kind of back up to pre-COVID level. And then you can see for FY22 and FY23, we've seen, you know, a increase in our enrollment. That has happened for various reasons at various levels. And what we wanted to do this year was, and we talked about this last year, is this was a good time to engage with an outside company to allow us to get a better handle on enrollment projections. So the district has worked with the University, I'm sorry, the Donahue Institute, UMass Donahue Institute in the past. We engaged with them again. You can see the top table, and it's an enrollment projection through 2030. They get less accurate, as you can imagine, the more years you go out, but this just shows, and if you can see where we are current year, which is '23, '24, those are actual October 1 enrollment numbers. And then just moving forward, you can see what our enrollment looks like it's going to be doing based on the formulas that they're using year over year at each grade level. Unfortunately, we can't, you can't get as fine as looking at each individual elementary school because it's just, you can't do that calculation very easily. And then you can see on the table in the bottom, that is a COVID-adjusted number. And UMass Donahue Institute went through a process and applied a formula based on some projection models to see what they believe from a projection standpoint is likely to happen to us as we continue to move out of the pandemic. Just to show quickly, you can see that in this slide, this is broken up by grade level spans, so K through 5, 6, 8 is orange, 9 through 12 is in the middle. This is, we are flattening, we're seeing continued a little bit of a, we are seeing a little bit of a bump up projected in our elementary enrollment, which is good, but certainly not significant. And we're seeing a little bit of a decline as our larger classes move out of the middle school, but not significant. And we are a little bit of a jump in the high school, I mean, in the K through 5. The tough part of this is when you stay flat, you have no opportunity to make adjustments in staffing, up or down, right? So it creates its own challenge. It also means that you're going to get less money from the state because our state allocation is based on a per-pupil enrollment count. So that revenue source, chapter 70 state funding, which we do not receive a lot of because the state does consider Winchester to be a wealthy community, and the way the formula works is that wealthier communities don't receive as much funding. The other challenge certainly, and I don't have to tell any of you in Winchester, is that our, the tax base is primarily, almost completely residential. Other communities have business in town. I came from a community where the businesses were represented about 60% on the tax base. Residents received a break as a result of that. That's not the case here. So when we talk about these budgets and we talk about going up from, you know, 3.76%, we're going up 4.7%, what's challenging for the town of Winchester and the school department is that that money is directly on the residential tax base. Those increases are going to be part of the only source of funding we really have, which is the residential property tax. In other communities, the budget may go up 4%, but the impact on taxpayers may be 1% depending on how the distribution of taxes work. And also outside funding sources, we do not receive really any substantial money at all in federal grants. Our demographic does really not, kind of doesn't qualify us for applying for many of the grants that other districts have the availability to apply for. So the point that I'm making is this is what this committee and I will be going through in the coming months will be finance committees, select board, who have an interest and support the schools 100%, but also have to think about not only our budget, but the town budget, and also they have to think about the tax base and the impact on taxpayers. So that becomes part of this process. Last year, we kind of landed in the same place. We were able to go into town meeting with an agreement with the finance subcommittee, finance committee of the town, the select board. It was a good way to go into town meeting when everyone is supportive of the budgets. You know, it's hard to tell what's going to happen this year. The town is experiencing an ongoing revenue problem. Expenses are going up and revenues not. And, you know, when we look at the overall increase in revenue in the residential tax base here, we go up around 2.5% to 3%, 2.5% to 2.8% actually, but our budgets are going up 3% and 4%. So at some point, it becomes, the math doesn't work anymore. And there are a lot of costs that the town takes on for the school department, including all of our facilities work, the DPW handles all of our custodians, they handle all of our maintenance costs, the town takes on our health benefits, which are significant, as we are the largest employer, and the town takes on other benefits. So, you know, whatever we do has an impact on the overall town budget. We hire one more position, that's one more person who may be signing up for health insurance, which is going to be a cost to the town. So we carry, while we carry the salary, the town has to carry those other expenses that go along with that staff member. So it's a cumulative effect. And when we go into the larger conversations of our budget and other town department budgets, that's when we start to hear those things and we start to feel, you know, get questions around whether or not we can maybe even make reductions potentially, which has been the case over the last couple of years. So finally, one of the things that those enrollment projections do not take account of is the new housing developments that are online and very much real for us now, becoming real. The UMass Donahue Institute will go back and make some additional adjustments to the projections I showed you earlier, but when these projections come from, I believe, and correct me if I'm wrong, but I think it was 2020?
2018.
2018. And you can see this rough where we are right now. So the first column, 24 enrollment, that's current year, October 1 again. And then when you look at the '25 projection, we're projecting 4,313 students. By grade span, we're projecting 1,0091 at the K through 5. These are the enrollment projections in the COVID model from UMass Donahue Institute. And then you can see the ranges that were provided to the town for the impact of these facilities, these residential properties coming online by grade span. So for example, River Street at the K through 5, the projection is anywhere from 30 to 35 students, 6 through 8, 22 to 24, 9 through 12, 28 to 32, Cambridge Street. So what you see on the far right-hand side is taking the range of River Street currently and Cambridge Street, and then adding the low end to our projection of what we are projecting for next year. So for example, in K through 5, we're projecting 1,901 students. If you take the low end of River Street and the low end of Cambridge Street, that is the 1,956. And then if you take the high end of those two developments, that is the 1,966. So overall total enrollment impact, obviously not all in one year, is projected to be somewhere around between 50 and 61 students. I'm sorry, between, I don't have a total on that, but you can see the total. I can't, I'm not going to do the math in front of you, fear of embarrassment. But you can see River Street's projecting total enrollment of 80 to 91 students, while Cambridge is 50 to 61. That will create some challenges for us in terms of our current districting. You know, our schools that are feeling the most enrollment pressure right now are VO and Ambrose, actually. So as we go through this process, as we start to see these things play out, those will continue to be the conversations that we're having. The good news is with VO, with a new Lynch building coming online in the fall of 2025, which is at the end of this fiscal year that we're talking about right now, we'll be moving two of our preschool sections that are currently housed in VO into Lynch. There'll be seven, there are seven preschool classrooms that are built into Lynch. They have their own luxury wing suite and their own playground. So we have just, the building will enhance our programming and what we can do at that level tremendously, which is all good news. So those are the kinds of adjustments we're going to need to pay attention to. And next year, again, is going to be a bridge year. I mean, this year has been a little bit of a challenge. With Lynch at Parkers, we were only able to hold one section of kindergarten for Lynch students at Parkers because of the number of sections and classroom space that we had. We have another section of Lynch students who are actually at Lincoln. That kind of thing will happen at some level again next year, potentially, depending on the projections of the enrollment. And then eventually, when we open the new Lynch, all of our Lynchies will be going to the new building. So if, that concludes my overview. Happy to answer any questions or attempt to.
Thank you, Dr. Hackett. So at this point, I'd like to turn it over to the committee and start with Mr. Nixon at the end, but if you could, is that all right?
Yes, I'm on.
And again, as a reminder, the hope was to try to be brief, and you have a question, and we'll go down the line, and we can come back if we need to, but your time is short.
So I guess I would, I have just a couple of clarifying questions from your initial presentation, then I'll end just with a comment on development and enrollment. We did make some changes in our CBAs with respect to hiring for our EYP program, extended year program.
Mr. Nixon, can you please use the full words?
So extended year?
Yeah, thank you.
And so there's some costs for that. I'm wondering, how do we, does that show up in this headline in Munis? I think that's 119. Do we, have we already encumbered spending? How do we project spending for EYP? What assumptions are we making and where are those assumptions in the budget?
So the assumptions that we're making are mainly historical enrollments in those programs. We have not, as you know, we made that, those adjustments in the contract. However, we don't know year over year, every year, who it's going to be. So every year, it may be something different, which has an impact on what that budget would be. In general terms, you know, we carry a historical average, and you know, our programs are pretty full. And Andrew, you want to answer the question of where it's carried in the budget?
I was just looking for the line.
For the cost center.
It's carried in the sped budget, 119.
And where?
In the sped budget, 119.
Okay. So since we, just given that we look at historical averages, but we've made some adjustments in our collective bargaining agreement, particularly to, and I'm glad we did this, to sort of incentivize some hiring. Many of our teachers were welcoming that opportunity. Our goal is to have to advertise less to go outside the district for that hiring. So since we actually do have that, I hope you can hear me okay, I feel like the speaker's cutting it, and thank you, Brian. I got to speak closer to this. So since we have some new contract language, our goal is to incentivize so we can use district employees, and we've also included in that incentive some higher rates for EYP, I'm just going to ask, can we maybe, can administration just circle back, look at those historical averages and maybe just sharpen the pencils to see, are we comfortable with any projections for EYP and do we need to encumber something? So that was it on EYP. So I guess I would just make a thought on the slide you ended on about development. There are other developments, what I appreciate about this is, these are some enrollment projections that are very much focused on the short term. So these projections do not include things like housing at Washington and Swinton, which I presume is going to happen, looking at. I presume is going to happen, looking at Mr. Bettencourt and Mr. Fallon on the floor. I think we're going to do something at Washington and Swan. We have condos that the select board and I think the, the planning board, ZBA have approved on Cross Street. So we continue to have a housing production plan and the town remains committed to more housing, more affordable housing, and that will have an impact. And then of course, you have just the broader initiatives on North Main Street. So some of those out years, I think we've talked about as a committee, may well be part of a second step effort for the UMass Donahue Institute that I know I'm looking forward to because that may inform our master planning exercise, which we've talked about in the context of trying to figure out what a new Morocco wants to be and needs to be. So, so this should, this information shouldn't be considered to be really comprehensive. It's much more just sort of focused on the short term because these are projects that are, have already reached substantial completion and folks are moving in. That's it. Oh, I'm sorry, one last comment about buildings. Winchester High School had a design enrollment for 1,370 kids. So this year, we are three students under that limit. And if you follow Dr. Hackett's remarks, next year, we're going to be over capacity. Again, we fought really hard to get extra space in this building like almost a decade ago. I'm glad that we did. We have a little bit of a breather when COVID happened and we saw that drop in enrollment, but as our enrollments begin to come back, some of those buildings where we've had pressure points, and this building is a perfect example, we're already crossing those thresholds. So I just want the committee to be aware, we're going to be 18 kids over enrollment next year, and that doesn't account for whoever may move in in some of these housing projects. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Nixon. And as we go down, if we could focus mostly on clarifying questions, that would be optimal, but Mr. Brady.
Thank you, Mr. Hopcroft. Dr. Hackett, could you just clarify, when you talked about the budget, you mentioned that the additional Lynch transportation costs weren't necessarily included, and then you also mentioned a little bit about the out-of-district costs, but then we showed an out-of-district slide. So can you just clarify the, the $66 million number? What, if anything, is still not quite factored into that yet?
The only, the only thing not factored into that, actually there, and I didn't mention this, we, we're not carrying any operating budget increase in athletics, and you can see that on, that line item roll up, and it does not include the Lynch general education transportation. So those are the two things it does not include. The budget does cover, as presented, our projected out-of-district costs.
Okay, great, thank you.
And I would just say, projected out-of-district costs with also recognizing that we're losing two funding sources, so.
Thank you, Mr. Brady. Ms. Bergstrom.
Trying to be gentle with that. Dr. Hackett, we talked about in the budget how the majority of this increase was personnel and that's our teachers, our ESPs, the people who work with our kids every day, but the rest of the, the program budget and any opportunity for new improvements was pretty flat. Are there other parts of our budget that we lose flexibility with, with the increase that we have? Are there other things that are going to remain flat like athletics?
Great question. You know, when I first got here and, and prior to my arrival, the committee was always presented with a list of priorities for program improvements. There are, there are things that we would love to bring forward to you. I do kind of have a philosophy to not put through people through the exercise of doing all the work to justify something within the budget if we just know going in, we can't afford it. And I don't, I don't bake that into the budget to start. Our, our actual approach is that this is what we need to run our school system with the same level of programming, which is, which is quality programming next year. If there then becomes available funding, then we will bring back to you priorities that we have identified that we would be asking for potential support. So for example, it, well, it never happens this way, but chapter 70 funds, we won't even know what that funding amount is until likely June. If, there are times when we, you know, we generally use the governor's number, but there are times when that number comes in higher, and that's an opportunity for us to have a conversation potentially with, with the select board. But at some point, obviously, we are, you know, we, we have an approved budget by town meeting, but there are also going to be things that happen within the approved budget. We might have some unexpected retirements. We might have a couple of move-outs. We might have whatever that does free up funding for us that we continue to evaluate. We kind of do and hit a reset in, near the end of September, when the dust settles on new hires, when the, you know, if we have some people leave and we replace people who just happen to cost less money, that, that differential is what we then work with to see if there's some other opportunities we can, we can look at. I would just make a, you know, a general comment, and if, you know, out of a, if you go to the line item, slide seven, you know, when, when you look at our other expenses, clearly, you know, we are, we are people business. So in the budget that we're presenting to you, out of, out of these $66 million, you know, 8.7 million of that is for other expenses, and those other expenses include contracts, like transportation contracts, other fixed costs, copiers, those kinds of things. We don't spend much money on, on supplies. I mean, we run extremely lean, and that is a function of the fact that, as we demonstrated, you know, there's a significant budget impact year over year. It can be depending on what we're looking at, and there's just pressure because of how we're structured for revenue. And as a result of that, and Andrew, I know you were able to bring up the per pupil, just as a fun activity, I'm going to ask Andrew to, so this is FY '22 per pupil expenditures for all the school systems in Massachusetts. It's roughly 400. It includes some public charter schools, but all school systems are included here. You can see, you know, when you look at Province Town, clearly that, that per pupil cost is a direct result of the fact they just don't have a lot of kids and they seem to have a lot of money. But we have sorted this in, in going from highest per pupil cost or, or amount to lowest. And I'm just going to ask Andrew just to kind of scroll through at a decent pace, not to make anybody sick from motion sickness, and I just ask you to stop when you see Winchester. And to make it easier, I highlighted it. And there it is. So what I like about that activity is, what I don't like is it's a little depressing, but it just, you know, and just to be clear, there are other costs that are covered by the town for us that are not necessarily included in this number. But what this number is, is the same number for all of the school systems. It's, it gives us context to see where we kind of fall. One could make the argument that, and I, I bet, and I was super surprised, and I didn't ask enough questions probably coming in, I'm, you know, the amount of money we spend per pupil is clearly extremely low. We're in the bottom 30-ish percent across the state. And you already saw where the bulk of our money goes to, which is where it should go to. Our staff is, is what we, is what makes us good. So we just do not have a lot of discretionary funding to take advantage of. And on top of that, this does not include federal funding. There are other sources of funding that other school systems receive that we do not get as part of this. So that is, that's a challenge. It's, it's an absolute structural challenge. And, you know, the, the difficulty, again, for Winchester is just the source of revenue is all residential tax base. So that gap, you know, may continue to grow depending on what happens over the next couple of years, so.
Can I ask one follow-up to you, Dr. Hackett?
Sure.
I've got all the softballs. Student Opportunity Act and Millionaire's Tax that many people in this community may have voted for, how does that affect our school funding?
It does not. We will not receive any funding for that, additional funding. We get a flat minimum per pupil allocation through chapter 70 funding, and that will stay the same because we just don't qualify for those additional funds.
Thank you.
And I don't know, Mr. Chair, if you wanted, just, we did get a late start, so obviously we, we may need to.
Extend a little bit.
Right, right.
Ms. Bolanese.
My question really was very much like Ms. Bergstrom's about what potential program improvements could be out there, but it does sound as if this is something that we would come back to later in the year potentially, depending on how things play out.
If the committee is interested in us bringing that back to you for your next meeting, we can do that. You know where you're sitting right now with what essentially is a level services budget at 4.74%. If you would like us to bring that back to you for your next meeting, we can do that. It may be, it may make more sense to do that as we move forward because as we know, the budget process kind of doesn't end for us here or next week. We could do that.
Personally, I found that very useful last year. I think at this, around the same time, following the public hearing, you came back to us with some of the opportunities that we could have for our program improvement, and I thought that opened up some good conversations among the committee.
Thank you, Ms. Bolanese, and I would, I would second that. You know, if we're looking at the, your budget to see what the wish list of the top few things are that, and how, you know, what the costs are associated with them would be helpful. I'm pretty familiar with this, having been on finance subcommittee, so I might just, just mention, you know, two comments if I could, instead of a question. One just being on the chart, you had mentioned to us earlier, the, you know, that the Lynch classrooms had been moved to Lincoln, and so that's reflected in the charts when you see the higher Lincoln percentage and the lower Lynch percentage. And the other of costs that we don't carry, you know, people who know me know I care a lot about the Lynch building being a net zero building. That energy savings cost is one that benefits the town, you know, not, not our budget. So just, I just put that out there. I promised I would go back to the, to the beginning. I know people asked more than one question, but are there other clarifying questions? I know we're getting late. Okay, good. You're good? Excellent. So I'd like to now invite the community to come up. It looks like we have one microphone, I thought we'd have two, to, to ask clarifying questions regarding the FY '25 budget. As a reminder, each person has up to three minutes.
Over here?
There's a microphone over there.
Over there.
Yeah.
Yep.
Thank you. So I guess we'll form one line over there, and questions should be addressed to the chair. Identify yourself by name and street of residence. Thank you. And we'll obviously extend our time a little bit here. We do have a meeting after this, so we can't go on forever, but we do want to give an opportunity to hear, again, clarifying questions on the budget.
And I will, I, it's always hard to be the timekeeper. I'm going to let you know that I will start the clock at three minutes when you start speaking, and when you hear the audible ding, that's your three minutes. So if you just take the opportunity to finish up to allow people behind you in line who may have another point to make. Thank you.
Hi, Nina Samuelson. I live on Wedgemere Avenue. I want to start by thanking you, Dr. Hackett, for working on the budget. I imagine that is a very complex process, and it was interesting as a member of the community to hear about that. We are here because we believe that a budget is a reflection of values and priorities, and a lot of what we saw in that aligns to a lot of the things that I value, particularly the value you're putting in staff. What I did not see was a value on student literacy, which is a value that I hold really dearly, and I think is really critical to our community, and so we would like to see that reflected in the budget. We do not feel that we have quality programming across the board in our schools. We feel strongly that we need to change for K through, K through 2 fundamental reading curriculum, and we are not satisfied with the budget that does not reflect that. You also named, let's just do what we did and see where we can add. What we did has failed a number of our students. That mindset in the budget is one that I find problematic, and I encourage you to reflect differently instead of doing what we've done, to think about how can we do some things differently to really ensure equitable access to literacy for all of our students.
Can I address you?
And I just also want to name, there are so many grants that are available, so we just want to name that. We can add that in. We don't have to cover it all in the budget.
Thank you for the question. So I would just say that while I didn't speak to us specifically, this budget does reflect our commitment to literacy through small class sizes at the elementary level, through 18, actually 21 positions at the elementary level specifically that have to do strictly with, with literacy.
Respectfully, I'm speaking to literacy curriculum.
Right. So I just wanted to say, you said, I didn't mean to imply that we're just doing the same old thing. I'm talking about, I didn't talk about or highlight our commitment through our staff, which you recognize is key for us, right? So the commitments we make to keeping class sizes smaller has a cost. The commitment we make to a 4% contract and making sure we don't lose high-quality people has a cost. We have over 20 people in this budget right now who, or 20 positions, who service literacy needs of students across our elementary school.
Beyond, I'm sorry, beyond the change to, that you talked about about staffing, are there any other changes to literacy reflected in the budget?
Specific to your earlier question, we've not budgeted for a specific curriculum in this budget. What we do have, and the way that we have operated, this district's operated for quite some time, which I think is the, the right way to do it, we have, we have funding for supplies, we have funding for materials and resources. We don't commit those funds as part of this budget. So we don't have a line item that says, you know, we have $10,000 in this line for curriculum-related supplies, and here's what we need. We don't do that now because we understand that we need to be flexible and, and changes can happen, and we try to stay as nimble as we can. Specifically to a, a multi-hundred thousand dollar curriculum implementation, that is not, not in that budget.
So we encourage that to be reconsidered, and we strongly encourage that. We know that there are trade-offs and a reality there. At the same time, we are talking about a small grade span, K through 2, and we are talking about an impact that is so significant across the district. You talked about enrollment. We are families who want more than anything to send our students to these schools. We see the data. We see the changes happening in other towns. We see the response. We know our teachers care desperately, and we are asking for leadership from you, Dr. Hackett, to change the reality of education for our students in this town.
And just to make sure you know, I, I hear you.
And where and when will we see that reflected in anything that is documented by school committee?
I'm sorry?
When will we see that commitment, which I am so grateful for, when will we see that reflected in something that is documented and that leads to concrete action? When can we expect to see that as a community?
We're dealing with a budget tonight.
Great, and a budget is a place we can see that reflected, so that is what we are asking for. We know this is a draft. This is the feedback we are asking you to consider before you present a revised draft next week.
Thank you. This, we have a long line of peoples here.
Yes, I will pass it on. Thank you.
Can we pass it on? And, but I would ask, you know, that we, we focus on, if we can, clarification questions here and things related to the budget. We do hear you on this, and, but it's, I think, a separate topic that we'll get to.
So my name's Nora Cooney, and I live at Tenonida Road, and thank you all for being here tonight. My clarifying question, and I have two. The first is already, and again, I've talked already to some of you about this issue. Already, our teachers, through the autonomy, are doing a lot of this work of switching to structured literacy. And my question therefore is, it is, should not be a teacher's job, and you talk about that we, the lean amount of materials, right, that we're lean with what we provide them, but it should not be a teacher's job to find, source, or pay for curriculum materials or seek out their own training. That has to be provided, and this is already a teacher-led transition to this important change in literacy, and we have to be supporting them. And I don't think right now the district is doing enough to support our teachers. It's an important transition, and that cannot wait to future budgets. That must be reflected in the upcoming budget. That's number one. Number two, if funding is a concern, and you mentioned it could be in this way, what efforts are being made by the district right now to apply for DESI grants and other supplemental funding that is available for evidence-based curriculum like structured literacy? We know that there's funding available for that. When you show a dedication to that, which our teachers are already doing, but as a district, we are not. So what are you doing to ensure our kids and our teachers get that additional funding if we don't currently have it in the budget?
So this, this is about the budget that I'm presenting tonight, right?
Yeah.
So I can't answer that question. I don't have an answer to that question sitting here right now. I, I have certainly received a lot of emails. I certainly have listened to you. I've talked to you just the other day directly, and I have additional conversations with many with many of you. I'm going to continue to go to parent associations to listen to this, but we have not, right now, we're not in a position where we have done, brought people together to have that conversation, to look at what I'm assuming you're referring to is a wholesale curriculum change. You already mentioned that we do a lot of elements of structured literacy. We provide programs that are really, I think, would be, are supported and are based on more intense phonemic awareness and phonics instruction, and that's where we are. So I recognize, and I see the line, I recognize that the question is, I think, right, and it was the previous question.
It's similar to the previous question, but the point is, right now, I think you are abdicating responsibility onto teachers. That is not, right now, they are paying themselves for doing curriculum work that is not part of their contractual obligation. So I think it is actually part of this budget you are looking at right now. You need to be providing more funding to support our teachers in this critical transition that's already teacher-led, and we need to support them in that, and that cannot wait till a future budget. You have to find the money in this budget. Thank you.
I wouldn't agree with your earlier comment, that teachers are doing curriculum work without being paid, but that's fine, and I'm not going to get into a back and forth on it, but I hear your comment.
And we're, we're a time another. Next.
Hi, I'm Laura Conti. I live on Highland View Ave. I just wanted to state that I support a district-wide transition to science reading, structured literacy curriculum. I want to know what's in this budget so that it can be equitable across all schools. There are different things happening in different schools, and that's unacceptable, and the status quo is not okay. One in three of our children, grades three through eight, are not meeting reading proficiency, so the status quo can't work. I support the additional increases for teachers. That's number one, but the curriculum, the money behind it has to follow, and I know there is additional funding outside of the budget as well as inside. If we would let go of some of our beliefs that we have to stick with what we're doing, we would be eligible for much more funding to solve this problem. Thank you.
Okay. I didn't hear a question, but is there a question you would like me to address?
My question is, I would like to see in index budget, how, how you're going to address this literacy problem, because it doesn't seem like it's in there right now. So I would, yeah, I want to, I want to know how you're going to address that issue in the budget, because you can't fix the issue without dollars. So if it's not in the budget, you're not going to be able to fix the issue. So it needs to be in the budget, and I would like to hear how it can get in there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Hi, I'm Christine Cronin. I live on Hutchinson Road. My question to superintendent is, what are our district goals and priorities? I am concerned that we just listened to a budget presentation that didn't have any goals and priorities. Any one of us who run an organization know that you build a budget in alignment with your values and goals? I didn't hear any goals. So that's my first question, is what are our goals? I would respectfully disagree with the statement that we have a strong program that the superintendent made. I think many folks here say not so much, and our children are suffering for it, and we are picking up the cost, heading to Russian math after this, because we don't have curriculum in any area, including math. And then the second question is, where in the budget might we find efforts to reduce the out-of-district costs? So out-of-district costs are high. Out-of-district costs are driven primarily by a failure of the district to provide for the needs of all students. So where might we find a budget line where the district is making efforts to reduce out-of-district costs?
Okay. So you have a couple of questions there. I'm not sure I remember the first one, but-
What are our goals and priorities?
Okay. So goals and priorities are based on our strategic planning. The committee has adopted goals. One of our goals right now is-
What are they?
I'm sorry, go ahead.
What are they?
Our goals are based on four areas that we've talked about, we've adopted. I have not had that conversation as part of this budget presentation, because candidly, we're at 4.74 percent, and as I said at the beginning of the presentation, our priority and our investment was in making sure our teachers, over the, the last three-year contract that we negotiated, which ends with a 4 percent next year, are provided the level of salary and compensation that they deserve, and that is a reflection of the work they do, and also keeps our staff here. So that's the priority. There's no other priority beyond that, is making sure that we maintain the high-quality staff that we have and that we support them. So at, right now, we've been asked, and the committee has asked me to come back with some priorities, that if there were funding available, what we would do, which I will do if that's the will of the committee at the next meeting.
As an educator, I just have to respectfully say, to have a budget for a school system that doesn't have instructional priorities is deeply concerning. My second question is, where might we find budget items that would reduce out-of-district costs, that would strengthen what kids get in the district?
I would not, I, I reject the notion that this budget doesn't have instructional priorities, but that's okay. I'm not going to go into back and forth with you on this, right? You've made your point. So our commitment in what we did do utilizing ESAR funding was to put a position in for a program supervisor position. Two years ago, we did an outside review of our LBLD program. Part of that review process was a recommendation that we need to have a leadership position that could come in and set criteria, review the program, and that position was budgeted for an ESAR. We have been advertising for that position since last summer, and we've not been able to fill it. So we're still committed to that through a funding, a funding source for next year. That's not reflected in this operating budget for, for right now, or won't be for next fiscal year, but we're committed to funding that for, for next year.
Thank you.
So as we move forward, I'd like to ask, if people could ask a question and then stop and allow the superintendent to respond fully to the question, just, I feel like the temperature is going up a little bit. I know it's a passionate issue. You know, many of us up here and down there all care about this issue and all care about the quality of our students, but we can't work the problem if we're like getting into a adversarial back and forth. I'd also like to give a heads up that in a moment or two, I'd like to also ask if there are people in the room that are here on any other issue, just because I want to be sure that we hear them and we can circle back to the others, but, but just if we could make sure we maintain decorum, I'd appreciate it.
Thank you. My name's Cheryl Timko, and I'm at Eight Black Forest Terrace. My question, I have just one question, is for specifically the, the school committee members. I want to understand what the committee members have been doing to prioritize moving towards a science-based literacy curriculum. There are obviously a lot of people in this community who believe wholeheartedly in that and the benefits of that for all of our students, K through 12, and I want to understand what the committee is doing to pressure and to challenge the administration on this point to move in that direction.
So, so I thank you for that. It's beyond the scope of a budget hearing for us to address that. We will be addressing literacy at a later point, so I'd like to defer that to our future meeting.
Is that for the meeting that's next, or is that?
That'll be, that'll be in February.
My question can be also answered in terms of the budget. I didn't hear any questions from the school committee members about literacy in the discussion you've had here tonight. So unless that's happened somewhere else in a different forum, we are not aware of the committee members pushing administration on this point, and we are asking that the committee consider doing so on behalf of the people that you're representing.
There will be, by the way, and we do have some limits on time, but there will be public comment at our next meeting, and so some of these remarks may be well-suited for that. So if you're in line, keep that in mind as well.
Thanks, everyone. I'm Lisa Naylor at 20 Mason Street here in Winchester. I appreciate the, the overview of the budget. Specifically, I find it, I find it a bit difficult to ask a very detailed question about the budget, considering that some of the line items were so high-level, right, about expenses and things that really only you have the detail of. And as I look through the presentation here, and I, and I see the top, I'm quite struck by the top of the slide here that says, "Inclusion, Service, and Innovation." And so my ask of us is, because we don't have the detail available, is to understand where that multimillion dollars of expenses has gone, is that we just kind of implore you to take a second look, to understand the choices that we're making. We're fully supportive of our teachers and the work that they're doing, and the priority that you laid out, Dr. Hackett, to ensure that we have quality staff and can support them. I think it's now time for us to take a secondary look at those expenses, ask ourselves what we can stop, start, and continue versus just hold flat, and then implore the school committee to take on this question that you gave Dr. Hackett, on what would it look like to absorb some of these future priorities and bring them back to see how we can expand that budget. Ultimately, I'm quite concerned in a budget meeting where we're asked to ask specific questions, where we really don't have the detail, but as you can hear from many of us, we're concerned that the funds we're spending, multimillions, aren't going in the directions that are needed for our students. So I offer that to you, because I don't have the detail to ask a specific question, that we're concerned those expenses aren't being put in the directions they needed.
Was that a question? I'm sorry.
No, I, my, I can ask you a question, because ultimately, the detail wasn't provided in the expenses. So it really is, if the detail of the expenses won't be, won't be available for, for sharp questioning, and then I offer that back to you, to the committee, that my question is, where are those expenses going? Can they be relooked at, and how do we hold new priorities on curriculum so that we can take on the challenges of skilling and reskilling and advancing and innovation that are part of our values? So because I don't have the detail, I can't ask you specifically, but I offer that as, as feedback.
Okay.
Thanks.
Hello, my name's Lacey Robinson. I live at Three Sunset Road. I'm a parent to two future students in Winchester Public Schools. My question related to the budget today is, if a curriculum with evidence-based reading that would allow for equal and fair education of every student in the district is implemented, what are the steps the school committee and the superintendent needs to take to include that in the budget of fiscal year 2025, and 2024 and 25?
It's a broad question, right? It doesn't have a dollar figure attached to it, and I don't, I think all of you here tonight have probably different ideas about what that might look like. I've gone through the budget. I've talked about where we are. It's a level services budget. The conversation around literacy, as Mr. Hopkoff mentioned, the school committee will be taking up the topic of literacy at the February 13th meeting, I believe. At that meeting, we will be presenting to the committee a plan for how to have this conversation. I've spoken to many of you about this. The voices that I've heard from parents and from staff has been that people want to have this discussion. We think it's important to have this discussion. This is a good example in some instances of this isn't really a conversation. People have preconceived ideas of what they would like to see as part of the outcome. We need to also understand what that is, because I've had discussions, and it looks very somewhat different from one person to another. I'm not looking to get into a topic of conversation on this. I'm just saying to you that tonight I presented a budget that is level services. Certainly, we will continue to, and we all, as we always do, and I mentioned it earlier, you know, go into our lines, look at our lines. If there are changes, if we need, if we have an opportunity to consolidate some resources, to, to make an investment in whatever it might be, we have that flexibility to do it. We have that flexibility within a budget that is essentially almost 90 percent personnel, because that's, that's our priority. So happy to, happy to do that. I work at the, you know, the will of the committee, and they're here tonight to hear from you. They will be talking at their next meeting about this feedback, and I'm sure that I'll be asked to, as I already have been, to make some, to bring some additional information for next meeting.
Thank you. I appreciate it, and I very much urge the school committee to bring this topic up. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there, just, I suspect maybe everyone in line is on, speaking on literacy, but are there any other topics?
I have a budget question.
But, okay. Can we hear the, the non-literacy topic, just so we make sure we get that in the, in the queue?
It might, it might leave in some literacy.
It might, okay. Apologies to the other folks waiting to speak on this topic.
Hi, I'm Jillian McDonough. I live at 135 Washington Street. So I see and I hear that staffing is the priority, and I wonder, one, has the school committee collected any data? Dr. Hackett, have you collected any data since implementing these raises? Has it decreased turnover? And hopefully, the answer is yes. I don't even-
Yeah, I can anecdotally tell you the answer is yes.
That's great. Okay, good. And so, and also, has there been temperature checks and surveys sent out to the staff and to the teachers in particular to make sure that they are feeling that they are priority number one?
So that's not really a budget question, but I will just say, it's kind of a preview, that will be part of a conversation that we'll be, I'll be bringing to have with the committee at the February 13th meeting, about how we open up those conversations, and the conversations aren't just with parents, right? The conversations are, as importantly and more importantly in a lot of ways, with our staff.
Yes.
And trying to find ways to collect that information, and, you know, we need to do it in an environment where people can feel comfortable saying what they believe, regardless of whether it necessarily agrees with what we do, or what is being recommended or suggested or advocated for.
Yes.
It's, that's what we're interested in, and that for us is the most important thing, and that is what we'll be recommending in a process to, to do that and to start that.
And is that kind of thing line itemed out in the budget? Does there need to be funds allocated towards making sure that the staff feels seen and appreciated?
The recommendation, the recommendation on 13th may or may not have enough specifics to actually have a dollar figure to it, but we have sources of funding that we would look to, to fund that. That would be part of potentially the budget, but more likely outside of the budget.
Okay. Yeah, because I think, while it is a priority, I think that the temperature checks probably do need to be taken. I think this issue of literacy continues to be pushed back onto the teachers, and so being able to have the touchpoint of the administration fully understanding how much pressure they're under to implement buy, train, answer, parent questions is really important. If, if it needs a line item in the budget, it needs a line item.
Well, and I think part of the process would be to check your assumption on that, because that may be true. It may not be true, and that's why we need to make sure that we, when we go out and try to create this conversation, that everybody, every teacher has a voice in that, and we understand what they're, what, how they're feeling, what their needs are, and what they think they can be further supported on, and that, and the same questions of parents.
Yeah, there was no assumption, there was no assumption there. It was that we need a-
No, and that's, yeah, that, absolutely agree. We are, we are in agreement.
Okay, great. And then just one other little plug, like for February, when we talk about literacy, it will be beyond the budget meeting, and so that is why there is an amount of urgency here. And I know that there is this slush fund possibly of, but that's-
A what?
Slush fund?
Oh, okay. We'll have to talk offline, so if you help me understand what that is.
Slush, 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 whatever that is, that, that you're going to bring back to the committee.
I didn't, I didn't use the word slush, just for the select board members and any FinCom members in the audience this evening.
Luckily, I'm not in politics or in school committee, so I don't know the vocabulary that might trigger people in that way.
That's fine. That's fine. Just want to make sure, yeah.
Okay, great. Okay.
Thank you. Next speaker?
Hi, my name's Bridget Durant. I live at Englewood Road. Surprise, I just want to see where in the budget the literacy is. It's the inequity that really bothers me between schools and across classrooms. Each year, these students can be introduced to different curriculums. That's incredibly unfair for their learning, and so I would like to know where and how that's going to be addressed.
So I would just loop back and say to you, what you say might be true. It might not be true, and that's what we need to find out through the process that we're going to be talking about, or I'll be talking with the committee about their February 13th meeting, because we need that data. We need to know how our teachers are feeling about that. We need to map out what, what we are doing, and we know what we have for resources. We know what we observe, but there's also things that we don't necessarily know, which is what we need to understand better.
Sure. I guess anecdotally, as a parent, having sat in parent meetings and hearing that there is no curriculum, and that I hear different answers each year, just anecdotally, that is what I have seen with two students coming through the school.
And I appreciate that. You know, we do have, we do have quite a few elementary K through five students. We're going to be at 1,878 next year. I want to make sure that we give all those parents and caregivers the opportunity to also express themselves when they may not be comfortable coming to a meeting and standing in a microphone and doing what you're doing tonight. So that is really a critical part of any process that we, that we use moving forward.
Yes, I feel well-supported tonight, so thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome. You did a nice job.
So I'd like to note that we're already 23 minutes over. I see three more people in line, so I'd like to stop, wrap up this hearing, go to one more. I'll check in with the committee members if there's any clarifying questions, but I know we have an entire meeting following this meeting, so we can keep moving, but if we could stop after Mr. Dixon, that would be great.
Hi, my name's Carrie McKeever. I live on Davy Lane. Like many people here, concerned with structured literacy. As it pertains to the budget and organizations in general, transparency leads to accountability. There is an extreme lack of transparency, even in this meeting, as many said, or others had said, we're looking at a budget at a very high level, right? There are many embedded line items in this budget. Without the information and the data underneath it, we can't understand what is being spent on literacy and the, the cost that you had mentioned before. We don't, you don't know what the cost, someone had asked, what would be the cost to put in a structured literacy program? You don't know that right now. That, in my opinion, is analysis that should have been done yesterday, right? To come up with a budget and a plan, you need- To come up with a budget and a plan, you need to be able to provide the individuals in this community with the details of the costs associated with it. So I ask, going forward, that detailed transparency is available to help us as community members to make decisions.
And I would just say, I think I'm being transparent that I'm not putting forward a plan tonight. So for, for me to put a plan, as you're suggesting, in the way that you're suggesting, that hasn't been, we have other content areas, we have other needs within our district, we have a middle school, we have a high school. So I've not been asked to detail out or break out any particular segment of what we do in any particular way. As part of a process, that would be something that we would want to know, right? We would want to see, what are we spending on literacy? How are, how are those funds being spent? I can tell you once again, that the bulk of the money that we spend on literacy is the investment in our people, is investment in hiring high-quality people. We don't hire generally first or second-year teachers. We try to hire experienced people. It's an investment in professional development, in training people how to do, and expand their knowledge base on all content areas. So I appreciate the comment, but, and we can do that, but that was not the purpose of tonight. I don't want you to think that I came here thinking I was going to present a plan from a budget perspective that was specific to literacy, because I didn't. I didn't, I hope that people don't walk away thinking I was going to. That was not my intent. My intent tonight was to present the budget at a high level for discussion. The committee is looking for feedback. They are certainly receiving it. I'm sitting here, hearing it as well.
Understood. I'm just saying, going forward, that level of detail should be made available. I certainly don't expect you to go through what is probably thousands of line items within a budget, but it should be made available to those who want to see it.
And if people want to see something specific to a content area like literacy, I'm only making the point that then we can pull that information, and we can show you exactly what we spent on staff, and we can show you exactly what we spent on supplies that have available for supply spending and professional development. That has not been a request of the committee. The committee can decide whether or not they want to see that. I do think that's part of a process that we would want to use moving forward, to your point, in terms of being, making sure that we're being transparent and honest and open with our communication with everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
My name is Pars Biani. I live at 307 Cross Street. I just wanted to make a few comments that I think potentially sum up some of the previous comments. Dr. Hackett, I can appreciate how a town that's sort of third percentile in wealth and 70th percentile in budget, it's a little bit surprising to people. And in that context, having a level services budget is actually quite an accomplishment, when two and a half is the state, you know, constitutional amendment, and you're growing expenses at 4%.
I like where you're starting with this. I'm just going to say, okay? I'm feeling better, so thank you for that comment. I don't know what's coming behind it, but I'm going to take the moment right now with that. Thank you.
But I can appreciate that. And, you know, we all read the Globe series in depth, right? And one of the data points in that series was Reading, you know, our neighbor. Reading spent $2 million on its literacy overhaul, and Reading, I believe, by enrollment is a smaller district than ours. And so when you look at a multi-year budget that already takes heroic actions to budget, and then in a two- or three-year timeframe, particularly if we get a state mandate from DESI around what a lot of people in this room want to see, we're going to have a multimillion-dollar expense in the budget. There's no awards for being last, so let's get, get out ahead of it and find those resources. And here's the thing, you have an army of people in this room. You opened your conversation tonight by saying, "It's great to see so many people at a budget hearing." And so this is, this is really a question also for the chair and for the other school committee members. How do you bring the energy in this room to go and help you find the resources to make the curriculum overalls we want? And here's why. It's not just that the group is passionate, there's a shadow per pupil of private spending that a lot of people in this district are doing, and people would love to pay a little bit more in taxes, not have to spend all the private money on tuition and other tutors, and just rely on the Winchester Public Schools to meet all of their needs. You have a captive army in this room of people who will help you go find those resources. It's probably coming from the state anyway, and it took a lot of effort even to get to the budget to where you are today. And if you have another $2 or $3 million cost for a literacy overhaul, use the energy to work with the town, work with the voters, to go get the resources to invest in the district, just as we all did for the wintry construction. Thank you.
Vincent Dixon, 60 Lake Street. Some of you may know, I've always been on the Finance Committee for four years, so I saw some of the struggles and some of the issues. There's three points I'd like to make and for your consideration, because there is a broader range of things. First thing is the point that was made about the weakness in revenue, because this is largely a residential community, and there have been, shall we say, a weakness in looking at commercial revenue. I do think parents, as well as the school committee and the school administration, should think a little bit more about reaching out and doing some public education for the quality school system that people want, and that all of us appreciate in terms of real estate value. That really needs a public education effort, not just, oops, here we go with another squeeze on the budget and the educational quality. Second thing is dealing with a full preschool. I was a swing vote to get a full kindergarten. We need a full preschool. It needs to be talked about as part of an educational advocacy by the administration and the school committee. I think that's vital. It's part of a complete portfolio of education for the entire lifecycle of education. The third part is diversity, which doesn't seem to get mentioned too often. I happen to be a member of the NAACP Mystic Valley Area Branch. We've reached out to the administration seeking to help in that area, have not heard anything back for many months, various attempts to contact in terms of that. And I would say, we, in this day and age where diversity is well beyond here at a much higher level, that this community needs to engage in that quite a bit more, and that these three issues need to be part of the advocacy. A budget is not just accomplishing good results, but also accomplishing a more sophisticated knowledge of the broader world that students are going to be go, going out into. And I hope you take these in the best sense in which they're meant, and hopefully reach out to NAACP and some other people in terms of addressing these detailed, as well as broader issues, and I thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dixon. So we're 30 minutes over. Are there any other clarifying questions? Yes, Mr. Nixon.
I just want to make a comment, and I don't know how many other room or town meeting members who already appreciate this. Unlike the town budget, so for instance, police fire, DPW, snow and ice removal, on the town side, by Massachusetts law, whatever town meeting approves can only be spent on that line item. Can't be moved from one to the other. State gives school districts more flexibility. Our budget is fungible. And so every year, when the superintendent brings a budget, we vote it, survives a process to the floor of town meeting right here. What's voted is a number, and the state gives us that flexibility, because it acknowledges public education is a dynamic and changing thing, right? We don't know what kids are going to move in during the summer, in migration, out migration, out-of-district placements, we've heard about this. And that flexibility is really important for school committees and school districts. So the point I wanted to make, Mr. Chair, is just that if folks are concerned, because there is a lot of detail, it can be thousands of pages, don't think that what we're voting is a specific line item for, for anything specifically. It all adds up to a bottom line, and continues to be evaluated by the administration after the budget is voted in the spring.